Imina Chenta Shetin, LSLTuran Guahan is back from recess.
Manana Sizus, colleagues. Imina Chenta Shetin, LSLTuran Guahan is called back from recess. At this time, colleagues, we need several more colleagues to come in to get a quorum.
We do have quorum, and at this time, we will entertain bill number 245-37COR as introduced
We're going to go into a moment's recess till we can acquire a quorum at this time.
by Speaker Theresa M. Tular. Speaker Theresa, Manana Sizus, you are recognized on bill 245-37COR.
There's six of us. We should, uh, we'll go into a moment's recess.
Sizus Massey, Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to switch the order of bills 245 and 288, which is later in the agenda. If I could switch those two bills, that would be my motion. Yeah, 288 is also a Chamor Land Trust bill.
Yes, but Speaker, could you do it notwithstanding?
Yes, notwithstanding the rules. I'd like to move to switch the order of the bills on our agenda and to switch 245 with bill 288. Both of these are Chamor Land Trust bills.
On that motion to switch the bill 288-37LS with 245-37, are there any objections? Are there any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Madam Speaker, you're still recognized now on bill 288-37LS. Please read the title.
Sizus Massey. Good morning, colleagues. Bill 288, well, I'd like to make a motion to put on the third reading, bill number 288-37COR, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture. It's introduced by myself and Senator Sabina Flores Perez, and I'd like to discuss this motion.
That, that's not amended, right?
As amended by the committee, and if I could read the title, it's an act to amend section 75124 and 75122B5 of chapter 75, division 2, title 21, and section 75A124 and 75A122B5 of chapter 75A, division 2, title 21, Guam Code annotated relative to authorizing the Chamor Land Trust Commission to secure infrastructure funding through the U.S. Department of Agriculture's Rural Utilities Service, RUS, to include the substantially underserved trust area, or SUDA, initiative utilizing proceeds from the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund. And I'd like to discuss that motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, but just on a technical note, maybe if we can, because when we had the Committee on Rules hearing, it was, the bill is introduced, so you could say that the bill was, the committee report was submitted afterwards and it was amended? And if you could just say that for the record, Madam Speaker, then we can proceed. So on a motion?
Well, yeah, all right. My motion is on the, as amended by the committee. This has been reported out and is available on the website. Should hopefully be available on our drive as well.
I was informed that it was. So on that amended motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Speaker Tulari, you may proceed on the amended version of 288-37LS. Thank you.
Sizus Massey. So one of the biggest hurdles that the Chamor Land Trust is facing right now in issuing residential leases is that lessons learned from the past, that these lands do not have infrastructure. And we can issue all the leases we want, but if we don't put infrastructure, make infrastructure available to these properties, they will sit idle, or, or our people will live in substandard conditions out of sheer desperation for housing. So this bill would provide a mechanism for the Chamor Land Trust to avail of USDA Rural Utilities Service, or RUS, funds to include SUDA, or substantially underserved trust area program funds. The RUS program benefits homeowners directly, while the SUDA program would assist the CLTC as an entity to bring in water and wastewater infrastructure to Chamor Land Trust properties. The wastewater infrastructure is particularly of interest to the CLTC, because if we can bring in wastewater, we can make the lot smaller and we can issue more leases. And they have property in mind to set up as a pilot program for this, where they can create a subdivision almost as soon as they can get funding for that wastewater infrastructure and set those lot sizes. And hopefully then, the, the other program that goes directly to the homeowners will kick in, and those homeowners will be able to avail of that to actually build a home. So this, this author, the bill authorizes them to make these arrangements with, or to enter into such an agreement with the USDA, and that we, and that it, it allows use of the survey and infrastructure fund of the CLTC to pay the debt service on a loan secured from the USDA. So this is really a big deal. Chamor Land Trust has not, in the past, gone out for any type of loan. This would be the first time if it is successful. And this was discussed in the past, but put on hold for several years because of the lawsuit that the Chamor Land Trust had to face and actually had to resolve after a number of years. So now that that is resolved, we believe that this program will be a perfect fit for Chamor Land Trust, hopefully bring in some infrastructure and put at least one subdivision on its way, and hopefully 166 residential leases. That's what we're really looking forward to. So testimony at the hearing indicated that the USDA's direct loan program offers an interest rate of 1%. Additionally, it was suggested that CLTC could secure more funding and better leverage the USDA grant program by utilizing these loan programs as well. So that was one of the amendments that we made to the original bill, was to include that other program, or to make it broader, so that includes all of the USDA programs that they might be eligible for. It gives the CLTC the discretion to deposit the revenues from the commercial leases into either the survey and infrastructure fund or the home loan fund. And I reviewed these, and they have very similar goals, of course, bringing in infrastructure and, and backing up loan borrowing. So this amendment would provide the flexibility to utilize both direct loans and grants based on available revenue. The estimated costs for water and wastewater were provided by Guam Water Works, which indicates that the linear foot cost for both water and wastewater infrastructure have increased by approximately 140 to 200% since the 2018 GWA Resources Master Plan update. And those detailed costs are provided in the committee report. So this bill was supported by CLTC, of course, by Mr. Carlos Camacho, who is one of the few developers on Guam, who has, I think, utilized USDA funding, and also by the Guam Housing Corporation, which is partnering with Chamor Land Trust at this time to, for loans for houses currently, and under this program would help to qualify those borrowers. So I asked my colleagues for their support of this bill. I think it would be a huge movement for the Chamor Land Trust. Sizus Massey.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Anyone wishing to speak on this? Senator Joe Sinagastin on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I stand in, in full support of this bill. It's something I was looking at last term and even this term to consider altering. But I, I thank the Speaker for, for introducing this bill. And the only thing I'm concerned with is with Chamor Land Trust. There are some leases out there that they're not getting any money from, and that's what worries me. I believe fully on what the bill's intent and what it's going to do and help the recipients of, of any of the leases. But I'm concerned about Chamor Land Trust needs to go out there, and if they got a lease on somebody, or there's no lease, kick them out and get somebody else in. If not, they want to stay and start paying. And with that, I, I stand in full support of this bill, and if the author would add me as a co-sponsor, I really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Senator Sinagastin, I'd like, Senator Fisher, I'll recognize you.
Senator, Senator Fisher, you have the floor. You may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill as well, and with the principal sponsor's permission, I would like to be added to it as well as a co-sponsor. This is a bill that is going to address in a profound way, or just, it will address and does address the lack of affordable housing on Guam. We have to encourage the construction of reasonably priced homes, so our people will stay here. I look at this bill as an attempt to address a very serious problem, much as 175 did. I see them almost as companions, because the thrust is to get people into houses and keep them home. So I, I rise in full support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Does anyone else like to, Senator, Madam Vice, Vice Speaker?
Manana Sizus, Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure, bill 288-37LS, as introduced by the good speaker of Jonah. And as noted by her, this, this measure, working closely with Chamor Land Trust, uses the funds deposited in the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund to include being used for debt service on bonds and other loans, is to literally make sure that the infrastructure for these leased properties to our Chamor applicants that qualify for it be able to have infrastructure. For far too long, Mr. Speaker, the biggest problem, like the good author mentioned, was there is a lack of infrastructure into the properties. I want to share for the record, for those who have been following this issue for many, many years, that the late Speaker, Ben Pangolinan, was really a key player in, in working, in working to try and make this a measure happen. And as I see this measure before us today, and, and hoping that all my colleagues will support this measure, it will finally bring closure to making sure that infrastructure is finally going to be implemented and initiated, so that our Chamor Land Trust applicants will be able to have the necessary utilities needed on this area. I want to say that on the amended version, there, on the amended version, it strikes out that the utilization of funds was up to 2020. We're now in 2024, and, and it duly states that in this provision, that all income arising out of the, any of lease or license of those properties declared in this subsection shall be credited and deposited to the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund and the Chamor Home Loan Fund in allocated amounts determined by the Chamor Land Trust through the adoption of this resolution. So I guess my, my question to the author was, I wanted to make sure that the funds that are provided will, will make sure that the SUDA program, once it's initiated, that, that there's nothing that stops it. So maybe just looking over the provisions of section four and making, because in the past, when there was, I see the strike-throughs, and, and yes, we've been working on this for many, many years, and I just wanted to make sure that the availability of funds that are received, that this program gets fully implemented. So is that the case with this provision? So is that the case with this provision? And the funds that go into that?
Speaker Theresa, do you yield to the question?
I'm happy to yield, but I'm sorry. Can the sponsor... I mean, could the proffer please just repeat that question?
I'm looking over the provisions and make... I just want to make sure that based on us moving forward with this SUTA initiative, utilizing the proceeds from the Chamor Land Trust, there was a strike-through because in the past it was looking at the availability of monies deposited into that will be up to 2020. You know, we're now in 2024. I want to make sure that the funds and everything that is deposited to date will make sure that this program moving forward, this initiative for SUTA, to build and get the infrastructure for these Chamor Land Trust properties, that it is... that it will all be included and that there will be no obstacles.
Okay, thank you. Now I understand. Thank you for that question. So on Section 4 of the bill, this is talking about what the... where the commercial lease proceeds are going to go in current law. And so it says in current law that it was going to go into the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund until 2020, and then all of them will go into the Chamor Home Loan Fund. So we are striking in this bill until 2020 that infrastructure funds still need some money. We need more infrastructure. So we are just taking out the until 2020 so that we will continue to put money into that infrastructure fund from these commercial leases enough to meet what the requirements of this USDA loan might be. That's the goal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I want to thank the good author for this measure and making sure that as we work closely with the U.S. Department of Agriculture and making this SUTA initiative, utilizing the proceeds from Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund available so that our Chamor Land Trust applicants truly will finally have the opportunity to get infrastructure into the lands that they hold the lease for so that they can literally build their homes, literally build upon the property. And this is something that they have been waiting for years. And with this measure, it literally shows a commitment from this August body that we are moving forward to have this true realization done. And again, I want to thank the good author and her co-sponsor, Senator Perez, for having this measure put on. And I'm humbly asking if I could be a part of this sponsorship as I was very familiar with it when I was the Oversight Chair of Housing, trying to see if this initiative could get through. And again, want to thank her for her hard work on moving this forward. So thank you, Mr. Speaker. I stand and rise in support of this bill, 288-37 LS, moving forward. Sina Massey.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice. Senator Duenes, and you'll be followed by Senator Barnett.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Speaker. Looking mighty dapper this morning up there. I rise in full support of Bill 288-37, Mr. Speaker. And as you mentioned on the floor, you know, two of the biggest problems that have plagued the Chamor Land Trust Commission, first and foremost, has been the ability to issue the leases. There's a number of reasons for why it's been difficult to issue the leases. Some of it is the order in which individuals, first in, first out, and that organization. But the second really has been fundamentally, Madam Speaker, the issue with regard to infrastructure. As we get out of session, I have several appointments that have been called into my office to meet with folks on Chamor Land Trust property with no water and, of course, no wastewater services. It's kind of inconceivable that we would issue these leases without at least the basics. We have opportunities to do that and basically put in the basics. But Madam Speaker, more important to what's being done here now is we're now moving into what really the Chamor Land Trust should be doing, which is creating subdivisions. Because when you go into the subdivision part of the law, this is where you're required as a developer to put in the proper infrastructure. Madam Speaker, you're familiar with Sagalnaden and some of the other developments that got tied up in litigation and the like. You know, and the fundamentals that were corrected in that issue were, first of all, getting through whatever contracts were issued. But after that was the implementation of the infrastructure. We know that those are some of the most effective programs that actually work for low-income housing. Madam Speaker, the other issue is on Chamor Land Trust property, there are only two financial institutions that can issue long-term financing, and that is the Guam Housing Corporation and the VA. And sometimes the VA and Guam Housing have a perfect marriage because the veteran also avails of Chamor Land Trust. But under SUTA, which is the perfect marriage once again to this type of program and how we should be handling things, the other barrier now, Madam Chair, that has taken us so long to get to where we are is construction costs and interest rates. So this is like now, you know, as my great uncle Barney would say, now we're cooking with gas, to where you take all of the components and you put them together to deal with this issue properly. One of the reasons why we have hot pots, hot spots, and other situations is because we've allowed it, Madam Chair. So this is a way to regroup, set the program leading by example, and use the economies of scale to be able to do this program properly. Of course, this won't solve the issue in terms of licensure and lease issues. That's a different story. But at least it will create an inventory now under a properly positioned subdivision. We've been talking about this for years now. Under the prior administration, that was one of the biggest operations outside of Lada and Sagalnaden. In fact, we've talked many times when we've had CLTC down here. Where is your location right now that is capable of creating a large subdivision if we had the money for infrastructure and we had the capability of doing this right? This also allows for more applicants, Madam Chair, because we could come down to as low as a quarter acre lot under this subdivision and be in great shape. So these are the real solutions when we talk about what we're going to go forward to do outside of temporary things that we have to do to try to help our people. But, you know, fortunate, right? Because as my good friend Simon Sanchez, former senator and CCU member, says, development, infrastructure follows development. You don't put miles and miles and miles of pipe going to sparse rural areas where you got hundreds of millions of dollars being put in to service a house here and a house here and a house here that might come up. You put infrastructure into an area where you know there is going to be large-scale development, where you know the economies of scale are going to work. Because even the return for the utility is there. They can also probably subsidize some of it because they know they're going to have long-term customers. Maybe the system development charge can be adjusted and these things and tag a little bit on to the bill because they have the fortune of having a fully, probably curb and gutter and sewered property. So yes, this presents the perfect opportunity to start cooking with gas and get it done. And so I hope that, you know, in the spirit of working together to get things done, to organize things, and to stop issuing hodgepodge leases here and there, create the dream of, you know, you get to go and finally have your piece of land that you can go settle down on, knowing that there's no infrastructure there. So we create our own problems. And that's not the right thing to do. So like I said, I'll be doing my field trips next week on so many phone calls coming into the office. Come and see what you can do to help us. It looks like you're trying to get some infrastructure stuff done. And yes, I'll go. And I'll, you know, hopefully anybody who wants to join, let's go and let's go see these families, meet with them, see their plight that they have right now. But this is the right way to do it. Right way to do it is subdivision law. There's a large parcel in Jiggo right now that we all know about that if we put in a proper subdivision can build hundreds of homes with the low interest rates that we can... I believe what's anticipated here under rural development is as low as 2%, Madam Speaker. I mean, that's back to the good old days of what interest rates were a mere few years ago for the average person. So fortunate for those who can avail of this program and hopefully avail and realize this through the subdivision that will be created and the opportunities that will be created. But yeah, this is absolutely a solution. It's the right direction to go. And like I said, many of us know, you know, as working when I was the Guam Housing President, we worked very closely with CLTC. We were able to turn some loans on some properties. But most of the folks that came in, they, you know, they had their plans, they had a good piece of land, but there was nothing going to it. They have half-acre lots, so they could have handled that part, but there was no water. So it really made no sense. I mean, great plan, great floor plan, you know, they had the capability of the financing, they had the income ratio, they were pre-qualified, you know, by the agents there. But it was meaningless in the end of the day because it just wasn't going to work without the proper water infrastructure. And of course, with the half-acre lot, they didn't have an issue because they could have put their septic system in. But this is the right way to go. I support the bill and I applaud the authors for taking on this endeavor. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Good morning, Manana Sutuas, to the people of Guam. Good morning to Ms. Laurie and her mom watching down in Malolo, and good morning to my colleagues. I rise in full support of this measure. Yeah, development follows infrastructure. Oh, if only that was always the case. But supporting this bill, which allows the Chamor Land Trust Survey and Infrastructure Fund to be used for debt service on loans obtained from the USDA's SUTA initiative. I actually thought that was something in Chamor, but it's substantially underserved trust area. The Rural Utilities Service, RUS, is an agency within the U.S... I did a little research on this because honestly, when I first read the bill, as you get deeper into these loans and the land trusts and all these different programs, there's a lot to digest. So just sharing with viewing public just some of the information that I got from my research. So the RUS is an agency within the USDA Rural Development, and they were given new tools through the 2008 Farm Bill to finance improvements in electric, telecom, water, sewer infrastructure, and substantially underserved trust areas, of which obviously Guam is one, land held in trust by the U.S. for Native Americans. So this part of the 2008 Farm Bill is known as the SUTA provision. The provisions are designed to make RUS infrastructure financing more accessible to and affordable for Native Americans like Chamoros in trust areas because those areas historically have had difficulty receiving federal assistance. Benefits, some of which have been mentioned by previous speakers of this provision, they can offer loan interest rates as low as 2%, waive certain documentation requirements regarding non-duplication of service, also waive the matching funds or credit support requirements for loans, extend the time period in which loans are repaid, and provide the highest priority for funding to eligible projects that will serve the trust areas. So my humble opinion, the bill checks all the boxes. It's also supported by all the pertinent stakeholders from the land trust to the Guam Housing Corporation. And I again commend the authors, the dynamic duo, for really going into the jungle on a lot of these Chamor Land Trust issues and doing what we can, doing the heavy lifting as a legislature to ensure that we are able to bring more opportunities for affordable housing, including infrastructure for Chamor Land Trust lessees. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Barnett. On the bill, Senator Tid agree, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues and those who are listening in today's session. Madam Speaker, I was one of a couple of us who attended the public hearing on this measure. And I'd like to commend the author for moving forward on this expeditiously and ensuring that these funds are put in an area that cannot be touched or transferred out by Yigamaga Hagan or anyone else, that it stays in this fund for its purpose. Looking forward to as well the rules and regulations that are going to be proffered for this because some of the questions what we had is that there were about 2,900 leases that were put out, but only 125 people have built their homes. And let's hope that those infrastructures are done by compliance and meeting all the guidelines and rules and regulations by both EPA, DPW, and other regulatory agencies. That's substantially low, 2,900, and only 125 have been built. I appreciate that the Board of the Chamor Land Trust was there to answer any of our questions and to ensure that transparency is first and foremost with them and that they all supported this measure. It was brought to our attention as well the difference between, and I think a couple of my colleagues mentioned, the difference between the SUTA and the Rural Utility Services. And it was mentioned during that public hearing that with the Rural Utility Services had a maximum of 40 years with a 1% interest rate, but no flexibility. But the SUTA gave us that flexibility, another opportunity to borrow on, which is up to 50 to 60 years, giving a flexibility, but with a 2% interest rate. And these interest rates are quite substantially low. This would help the individual build their homes. It's the infrastructure that's going to cost. And that was a question I had for GWA. Mr. Chris, I think it was Chris Bedasi, on the cost, is it still 1 million a mile? He wasn't quite sure. And he was supposed to get back to us. So I'm hoping that the author of the legislation could let us know what is the cost. Did he... Did Mr. Bedasi provide us that information? Because there was quite a bit of, you know, people asking me, hey, you know, Senator, how much is it going to cost? How come they didn't have the numbers on hand when they came to the public hearing? I said, well, I'm sure when we get it, we will announce it and it'll be in the committee report. So I'd like to ask the author of the legislation if she can provide those numbers.
Speaker Terla, do you yield to the question?
Yes, I would yield to that. And thank you for the question. And GWA was actually very responsive and gave us a very detailed accounting, which is in the committee report, as to the cost. They have it broken down by cost per linear foot, cost per mile, and then they break it down between gravity mains, force mains, and sewer manholes costs. So for water lines, their cost per mile looks... And then they break that down by the size of the pipes. So there's all kinds of, I mean, different costs for the 2-inch to 6-inch, 6-inch, 8-inch, 10-inch, 12, 16, 24-inch. I'll just make them... The cheapest one is a 6-inch PVC, the cost per mile, $4 million approximately for these wastewater. The cost per mile, $4 million approximately for these wastewater. The gravity lines, again, I'll just go with the 8 inch diameter as opposed to the 30 inch diameter, which would be the 8 inch diameter cost per mile, $5 million. For the 30 inch diameters, $20 million. For the force main diameter, 10 inches, 4.5 million dollars per mile. For the 30 inch diameters, 15.7 million dollars per mile. So these are quite significant. Sisus Massey.
Senator Titegwe.
If I, thank you for that, Madam Speaker. The opportunity to ask that question and, and, and thank you for the author responding. And I'm pretty sure everyone's eyes have opened wide because it's, she was different from 1 million a mile once upon a time. And we're seeing the costs grow. And this is probably why many of our people are leaving island because of these costs. To build a house is substantially expensive for many people. And especially those in the Chamor Land Trust who were given property. Most of them were given because they didn't have any land. Most of them were given because land was taken away from them, from the government, or even the federal government. So whatever we can do to assist these individuals to keep them home, because I know many of these people don't want to leave island. Many of them are heartbroken that in order to keep their family with the roof over their head and food to eat on the table, they're forced to move. And if there's anything we can do to assist these individuals and at the same time protect the environment, the surroundings that we live on, then we need to do our part. So I humbly ask my colleagues to please support this and any other measure that'll assist these families the most in need. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Titegwe. On the bill, Bill number 288-37 as amended. Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and certainly thank you to Speaker Terlahe and Senator Sabina for the introduction and support of this bill. I think we all recognize over the years that while the efforts have always been there to try and implement the full vision of the Chamor Land Trust, the fact that infrastructure has not been put in place at the same time, all the way down to funds to survey lots, have been very challenging over the years. And hence, a lot of families really have not been able to take advantage, assuming that they even got a lot if they stood in line in 1995 and somebody else politically didn't jump in front of them and got accommodated. If they even got their lot, the difficulty there is being able to finance even a home. I think that's why we find in a lot of existing land trust lots where people have gone and, and used whatever resources they have to build a shelter, uh, these homes are substandard. Most of these homes are not even permitted. Most of these homes don't meet any of the building requirements or the safety issues with regards to that. And so unfortunately, many of our people live in, in substandard living environments if they do live on land trust properties. So certainly, I think this is a big step forward in, in allowing the opportunity and certainly taking advantage. USDA, next to the Department of Defense, is one of the largest funded federal agencies. And we certainly on Guam have not always taken full advantage of the opportunities available and loan programs available and programs in general that are available by USDA here that our people can benefit from. But I did want to ask the good speaker if she would yield to a question because I see the funds are going to go into an account here for Chamor Land Trust, but I also wanted to know in terms of these loans by USDA, uh, what amounts are we talking about that they may have to pay back on an annual basis? And then how much are these, is this fund in the land trust actually going to generate to cover the costs? You know, it indicates there, since 2015, any additional lease monies would go into this. You know, if there, there were bull cart trails and things of that nature that were sold to address access to other properties and things of that nature, those funds would go into this account. But just in general, how much are we currently, or how much do we currently anticipate goes into this fund on an annual basis and what's expended? And what will be used to repay these loans from USDA? If I can ask that question of the speaker.
Speaker Terlahe, do you yield to the question?
That's a great question. I was hoping to include that in my closing, so that's, um, is very relevant. So I'm not the expert on, on the amounts, but I did get some estimates and for example, if we get, um, a loan amount, 16 million monthly payments, uh, plus a debt reserve is about $41,000 per month. Uh, that's just one example. That's for a $500,000 annual payment. If we were able to make a $750,000 annual payment, loan amounts of 24 million, we might be looking at monthly payments of 62,000. Very significant for the Chamor Land Trust, which really does not have, uh, that much income currently. Uh, how this would be paid, I don't think the USDA, my understanding is USDA will not finance us, will not, unless we can show that we are going to be able to bank those payments and especially whatever upfront, uh, that they might, might need. So that's why there's so many other things going on at the same time. One is a bill, of course, to use excess funds to put in at least 9 million or 10 million more to, to show USDA that we've got money there to help repay. The other one, of course, is commercial leases. That's the money that's going into this Survey and Infrastructure Fund. That's what's supposed to be funding infrastructure in the first place. So if we can get enough money from the commercial leases to put into there, that's supposed to, um, assure them as well of repayment. That was one of the reasons behind one of, you know, another bill that we're talking about, to get from one of those commercial leases, 9 million upfront. It's also, uh, supported, you know, these commercial leases as, as the, one of the previous speakers says, yes, the Chamor Land Trust has to do a better job of managing its commercial leases, getting the full amounts and the payments promptly so that we don't get behind if we do get on a loan. Also, that's one of the reasons why we did that submerged Subsea Cables bill the way we did, where we totally changed the fee structure and gave the Chamor Land Trust a regular source of income for 30 to 50 years at a time for those submerged cables. They should be receiving $100,000 per cable and they come in in sets of six. And, uh, if I remember correctly, um, that would give them significant amounts per the cables, especially the ones, uh, that we currently have that are being renewed and the ones that are upcoming as well. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I appreciate you elaborating on this because obviously that's a very important concern. I mean, USDA is providing all these opportunities, but rightly so. I mean, they have every expectation of being paid back with regards to these loans. And I certainly concur that while we are moving forward and I'm sure this bill will pass, I mean, we need to, you know, relay, I think there's a need and it's unfortunate because as I said, I've had the opportunity to work with the Chamor Land Trust Commission reviewing their files and their operations. And, you know, we're still, all these many years later, still challenged with trying to ensure that the land trust operates as effectively and efficiently as it should. And there's the challenge that lies there. Uh, because certainly being able to meet these debt requirements is pretty serious business. We don't want to see them default. We don't want to see the opportunity that this door is opening to be closed because they're not meeting their financial requirements. And I concur, particularly with regards to their commercial loans. There's always been this perspective that, Madam Speaker, if, if you're dealing with the government of Guam, you know, you don't have to worry about it because by the time Guam figures it out, you know, a few months, a few years have passed. And that historically has been the case with the Chamor Land Trust, particularly with regards to their commercial leases. I think the golf course up there is a very, very good example. Almost 15 years ago, when I worked with them, when I was up at the University of Guam, uh, that particular operation was in debt. It was actually at the top of the list. And so to find out now that the applicant, they're not the applicant, they're, they're applying or wanting to be able to get legislation through this legislature to turn that golf course into a solar farm. And my first question is, why didn't you cancel the lease? Because of the amount of money that they owe the Chamor Land Trust? Why isn't action taken? Why are we politically accommodating this interest to be able to hold on to property that they have not paid for? It's not the obligation of the government of Guam or the Chamor Land Trust to accommodate whether a business survives or not. If they want to lease the property, lease the property, make your monthly payments. But no, then they'll extend it further. Oh, can we not pay our lease until we actually get financially off the ground, until we build our operation? That's also the case with a major piece of property, a critical area in Dedido, that's been able to hold on to that land for how many years? And now they're saying, oh, can we defer payment until we do this, 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 and that, and upside down and everywhere around? Taking advantage of that. Where normally the process is, once you lease the property, you lease the property from day one, you start making monthly payments from day one. That has not been the case, but we accommodate, right? Because some of these people are just connected. They're important people. There are people that have influence and money that influence people in here. Influence people in the government, influence people that should be ensuring the interest of the public and particularly with the Chamor Land Trust Commission. Who should be ensuring the interest of the Chamor Land Trust, but that's not the case. They allow these Chamor, they allow these commercial leases to languish and not pay the bills that they owe on a monthly basis. And there should be a very clear process so that everyone knows these are what the rules are. If you don't pay your lease agreement, step one, step two, step three, you're out. So when we wonder the impression of our own people, who's doing it? It's always easy to point to the outside and say, oh, you know, it's the military, it's this, it's that, it's the foreigners coming in, it's somebody else. But when it comes to ourselves taking responsibility, well, we don't talk about that because that's not nice. We don't want to be not in favor of certain people or not get favor even more so. Because a lot of us, wow, you know, we're at the table to get what we can get. And therein lies the challenge. And I appreciate the efforts that are being put forth because it's getting harder now for the land trust to explain why they're not performing. When they're being given the tools to operate, but they're choosing not to use it. So certainly in the case, that's such a glaring example, and I've not been to that golf course, but I drove by there not too long ago and I'll tell you from the gate, it looks terrible. The maintenance of that facility is just, you got to wonder. You know, in the whole course of a working day, how do we allow this stuff to slip? I've, I've never had that luxury of having one set job for years and years and years to go back and do it repeatedly to make sure, am I doing it right? But the land trust leadership and management in particular, some who've had their hands in the cookie jar as far deep as it can go. And we wonder why, all these years later, the land trust has not ever taken off the ground. Certainly, the issue of infrastructure is a critical element. It's an important element. Uh, this bill will allow that opportunity for, for the land trust to take advantage of it. Certainly, I'm sure we're going to want to ensure, Madam Speaker, that the land trust is collecting the money that they're owed and paying the money towards these loans so that the people truly, the people truly who need and can benefit from this land, be it for agricultural purposes, which we want to see more of, or to build their family home for their own safety and security, we want to see that. But at the same time, there's major issues of management and operations of the land trust that just need to step up to the plate. Because a vision is there. I think we all support it. And yes, I'm critical, critical, because goodness, the list is long. The list is long of abuse at the Chamor Land Trust. People too busy, like I said, their hands are all over the cookie jar. And they're not ensuring that these resources are going out to the very people they were intended to serve. So I hope they kick up with regards to their commercial leases. I hope they start ensuring that those that owe the Chamor Land Trust money, money that was always envisioned and intended to go back into infrastructure and surveys. I mean, can you imagine you have boundary disagreements because people were assigned property without clear surveys? To even know where these boundaries are and they're in dispute about it? We just pretty much left them here, here's your land. Okay, you go survey it. And aren't we shocked when the survey lines don't add up? Huh, frustrating. But nevertheless, I think this is an important step forward with regards to this bill. And I'm sure, Madam Speaker, I hope you include all of us. I don't think anyone's going to object to not being included at a cosponsor. I mean, this is a kind of debate and engagement we should have of ensuring that not that, that the, you know, infrastructure should follow the development, but the infrastructure needs to be compatible and side by side with the development, particularly in northern Guam. And we had that discussion last week, recognizing how important it is that we address the infrastructure so that we can help ensure the health and wellbeing of our northern Guam waterlands. So with that, Madam Speaker, I certainly stand in full support of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. On the bill, Bill 288-37 as amended. Minority Leader Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good morning. Good morning to my colleagues. I, you know, first off, subscribe fully to what the gentle lady from Sao Paulo Bay had represented. And also the concerns that were also brought on by, um, the gentleman from Geogee. Wonderful bill. And I think that it's a great tool. But you know, I'm reminded of an individual who walks into Home Depot with visions in their head of how to be able to fix their house, buys the tools and then one, either when they bought the tool, they didn't know how to use it. Or when they bought the tool, they put it in a toolbox and never used it. Much less, the money that they used to buy the tool, they didn't have. Because they put it in a cart. And unfortunately, as great as a tool that this is going to be, and it should be, there are many historical concerns, there are many historical issues that have plagued the Chamor Land Trust. Land Trust. You know, the gentle lady from Tumuning, when she brought up, 2,900 leases have been provided, yet only 120 individuals, 125 individuals have been able to build their homes. Some of these individuals got their leases for the last three decades and not being able to do anything about it. And it's not to say that they had to wait three decades for this bill to, it's what happened. And a lot of that occurs because of, I guess, when given the tools, Chamor Land Trust, and given the ability to be able to do this, it hasn't been done. I'm not going to belabor the fact of the concerns with regards to the commercial leases, or any type of the leases where the Chamor Land Trust is supposed to be managing and collecting funds. You know, when you look at the, the bill here, and you're looking at basically the mechanism of how this is going to happen, one of the things that basically, that, that I'm very much concerned about is the ability to use these funds to be able to pay for things, including debt service required for financing, secure through USDA, whether it be for the RUS or for the SURA. You know, Madam Speaker, the government of Guam has a habit of being able to get into a number of different programs because it looks good. Okay, but then when we come back and we go through the bushes and we see as to whether or not we can afford it, what eventually happens in many of the cases is that while we give them, we give, this body gives, you know, the, the agency, the ability, or in this case, the commission, the ability to be able to secure and to negotiate and to get into an agreement with regards to the financing, is at the end of the day, they come back to us and they say, oh, you know what, we don't have enough, we didn't collect enough, and we're going to need some help. Because if we don't get this, then things are going to, this, this program's going to fall apart. Then the onus becomes, comes on us. Okay? You know, it's very hard to fathom how much of a concern that will be recently, because we just have, we just happen to have millions of dollars more in our coffers to be able to cover these shortfalls. But you know, Madam Chair, I remember back in the day when we would struggle amongst ourselves on how to be able to divvy up $150,000. I remember that one instance. Four different senators vying for a pot of $150,000 that we had access to. And we had to split it up. Today, that's peanuts. But that's not going to be, that's not always going to be the case. And more so, when we start to talk about these loans and the guarantees of these loans, and if we're going to carry that debt and the burden that we have on this thing, is if this debt can't be carried, if this debt can't be satisfied, who eventually is going to suffer from this? It's going to be the very same people who have been waiting decades to be able to finally build and live in their homes. Don't get me wrong, Madam Chair, I'm not seeing all of this because I don't, you know, I don't think, this is, this is a great bill, this is a great tool. It's a great tool. It's a great tool so that people can actually get the financing to be able to finally build the homes. I noticed here too, that, you know, there's, that we're talking about basically two different programs. Okay? The rural utility service and the substantially underserved trust area initiative. And I think that one of the key factors, and one of the key things here is that, as the good, my partner here, and the good gentleman from Tumuning has stated, is it basically now encourages and forces us to look at subdivisions. But even at that, Madam Chair, before, just by reading the bill and seeing how it's supposed to work, before our landowner, before that homeowner, that landowner can take advantage of some of these programs, there has to be accessibility to the, to the infrastructure. And some of this infrastructure is thousands of feet away. Who's going to pay for that? Obviously, there's another program for that. But let's go back. If we don't fix our ability to be able to manage our current leases, bring them up to date, make sure they're being, they're paid, then I have more comfort in this program. You know, and it's very difficult to be able to pin down. Or do we have, I'm, I'm, I'm going to ask, you know, if the author of the bill can yield to a question with regard to, do we have any ideas to, two questions. How much do we have in the current fund? And how much were we supposed to have had if we were to be current on our leases in that fund?
Speaker, do you yield to the question?
I apologize. That information is absolutely available in their minutes. They discuss it at almost every meeting. They also submit reports to our office. I just need a few minutes if I'm really going to get that, but otherwise, it's available on, on the communications from them. They have to report monthly their finances from those leases. And in the meetings, they talk about those that are behind and their efforts.
So if I said correctly, there is the amount that they have and the accounts, and the amounts that they have?
They, they definitely know exactly how much they are behind. In fact, this is actually highlighted in the audits, which is, yeah, so what we're also tracking.
Okay. And I appreciate that, because you know, again, Madam Chair, it's a great bill, great tool, to have in the toolbox, okay? And it's a great thing for our landowners and for, for people who have been waiting decades. And, you know, this body, as much as we want to be able to continue to assist, this is, this is how we can best assist. However, the caveat to this thing is something that's outside the realm of our power, our abilities to be able to, 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 to manage, and that is the management of the leases that we have. Okay? So I don't stand in objection to the bill. In fact, I love the bill. It's a great bill. I raise a concern that here is a bill that represents a tool given to an agency, another entity, and here, a very important entity with a very important and significant, the significance that it will have to, 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 to people who have been waiting decades to be able to build homes. I just hope that this is not another bill that we have to wait another 30 years for a person to build, because now the finances are, I hope that as this thing gets enacted and everything, there's, it lights a fire on there to some, some people to make sure that we take full advantage of this. Because the other thing that I recognize, this is an initiative from the federal government. And, you know, as was mentioned earlier, there are a lot of times, there are certain initiatives and certain programs that are available, but we just sit on it. We promise that it's going to, I'm, okay? I think we've all heard all the promises over the last four years of different programs and how it's going to help. And people turning in applications and waiting, or people asking, says, you know, what about us? And for legitimate and good reasons. This is not because of their, they're, they're, not for their lack of trying or a lack of wanting to be better. Okay? It's, it's basically a hand up, not a hand out. And this is the perfect bill, the epitome of that. It's not a handout, it's a hand up. But as we extend the hand up, or we give, okay, we got to make sure that they're able to stand. So my concern is not in the bill. Great bill. I love the tool. My concern is the ability of the commission that's going to have this tool, to be able to utilize it, to make sure they have the money to maintain it and to sustain it. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to speak and bill.
Thank you, Minority Leader. On the bill, Bill 288-37 as amended, Senator Siniklas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, everyone. You know, I wish I had a genie in a bottle for, for something like this. You know, I remember nearly 30 years ago, when there was kind of like a land rush, everybody was running into the jungles and, you know, claiming their little parcels of land. But you know, I'm still learning the process and, and learning the history behind this, this all, you know? There's the Chamor Land Trust, and then there's the program, the Land for the Landless. And, you know, sometimes I wish we could go back in time and advise ourselves that, you know what, in 30 years, some of these properties would not have been, still not be developed. I, I, I look at the program and I say, you know, it's a wonderful program, it's great. I, I understand what we're trying to do, but the application, the application of it is, is, you know, it's like eating a boneless, you've got so many bones to remove. But I, I, I understand the intent of the bill. It's a great bill, and I want to echo the sentiments of the honorable gentleman, the previous speaker. And it's a great bill. It's trying to fix, you know, this thing as we go along. It's like you're, you're in an air, in a broken airplane, and you're trying to fix the engine while we're still flying. But, you know, I, I think about this, and I tell myself, you know, what are we, what are we trying to do here? You know? And I didn't have to go far, you know, you can look at Umen and look at other places around the island, and how these, these properties have been developed through the years. And I'm asking myself, is this the, is this the right way to do it? Does this bring value to our community? Are we raising prices and adding value and giving, you know, creating financial wealth for our people? Or are we just willy-nilly, just doing up the land and not developing it properly? And like I said, I wish we could go back and tell ourselves, you know, why don't we, you know, develop this and package it and package homes and, and do it the right way, where we're adding value to our community and creating wonderful subdivisions for our families to grow and learn and have fun and enjoy living on the island? But, you know, what we did was we chopped up the properties and gave them away and didn't offer infrastructure from the very beginning. And now everybody got a quatsa la niña, you know? I had a, when I first came into office, I had a concern by one of the constituencies, a Chamor Land for the Landless program recipient. And I think they purchased the lot for like $2,000 or something like that, if I'm not mistaken. But the value of the current property, if you look at it, it's about $20,000. He can't do anything with it because there's no road to it. So he, he has, his property has grown in value, but he can't access it. And so, you know, this is sometimes, I think we need to temper our desire to get elected with actually trying to do the right thing. But this is the course in which we were set, and this is the direction we're going. So let's try to fix this, this plane while we're flying in that direction. But I, I don't have any objections to the bill. I actually think it's, it's a good bill, given our, given our circumstances, but if I had an opportunity to go back and do it one, do it right, that's what I'd wish, is that we do it right, we would have given proper thought to the process and actually think about building wealth, not only for our communities, but also for the people who would have gotten these, these, these properties and developed communities where, you know, we can raise wonderful families. And, but again, I, I support the measure, and I, and I, I wish us good luck moving forward. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Siniklas. On the bill, Bill 288-37 as amended, Senator Luhan, you are recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 288-37. And as the retiring speaker had mentioned regarding doing it right, I got to tell you, again, I'm in full support, and I wish this was the silver bullet, to be able to, once and for all, take care and correct the, I guess, the mistakes or improper ways on, on how lands were given out. Going back to either the Arendo, Land for the Landless, maybe morphed into the Chamor Land Trust. I have a family now that I've been, we've been working with now for about a year to a property they have on Land Trust property. They initially came in to seek help to get water and power. Pretty simple. You have a building over there, you have a house, they built out, of course. What's the problem? Well, they have to go to the Chamor Land Trust, because it's a Chamor Land Trust property, to get the authorization to go to Water Works and also to GPA, to be get, able to get a hookup. Okay? So they, back there, they go to the appropriate agencies, and they're told, no, it's not quite right. After a few times, and you know, these authorizations last for 30 days, and they have to renew the authorizations after that as well. So when they're turned down the first time, they try to go back again. So they've done this a few times. So after a few times in, in doing as such, I finally called the trust, the Chamor Land Trust, and I said, what is, what is the problem? What is the problem with this particular situation and this family that has their home there? Because we go back and forth. Because finally, you know, the agencies, the water and, and power said, we need to see the deed. Well, deed can't be given, it doesn't belong to these families. So Chamor Land Trust calls me and said, the problem is unfortunately, these people have their lands on federal lands. And nothing can be done by either of the agencies, water or power, because it's a federal property. Okay? So what do we do? So I called the family and Chamor Land Trust, we sat down, and there are no records of anything. Now, the family has a record of what they've been given, but the Land Trust doesn't have it. And at the time they were shown the property to build their, their home, you know, there was not any surveying and, okay, this is the easement and all that. I mean, they were taken supposedly, we were, I was told by the family that we were taken out to this place and by an individual and shown, hey, estegi, hatsega ma muguini, hatseguini. So they did. Ma hatsegu manya. And so how can we fix this? We can't. We can't do it through legislation, we can't do anything. It's not properties that are given back to the government of Guam. The positive thing about that is when we looked into this certain property, is that at least at this point, at least at this point, the federal government has no plans for this particular area, for any of their, their build out or buildup. But that's a good thing. So our next move is basically to meet with the governor's office and see what we can do, because other than requesting the federal government these properties back to be transferred from the federal government to the local government, nothing else we can do. How do we make these families whole? Do now, do they, are they able to get in the front of the line? Is that constitute them getting in the front of the line to be able to get land now? I don't know what the answer is. It's beyond us at this point. But I understand, they're not the only ones in this situation, there are quite a few more. And that's because properties weren't surveyed, and at the time that these were given out, it's just individuals that were going out there, hatsegu manu, you can build your house here, and you can build here, and you can build there. And when they were able to, they did. And of course, now, as now, it's required, of course, that they will get, of course, inspection, whether their house is, you know, I mean, meets the code to be able to get the power and water and all that. They couldn't even get a building permit. So I'm in support of this bill, and I, I, again, now I hope and pray that it's, it's maybe not a silver bullet, but close to it, to be able to fix these things that that were done wrong or incorrectly. And now we have people that And now we have people that may be kicked out of this property. And where do they go? Would they be able to qualify for other housing? Assistance? Well, now the government take, um, an interest in the sense that it was a government representative that told them to, to build this particular area? I don't know. But reading through this bill, Madam Speaker, is, I mean, I'm excited because maybe, maybe now we can move forward and correct these things and hopefully we have the monies to be able to get the surveying and infrastructure in there. This is one family that visited me. And we know of numerous other families that are in this situation as well. How numerous, what that number is, I don't know. But if the old way of surveying is just build here and build there and, yeah, you, yeah. I would imagine there's quite a few still out there. So with that, Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 288-37 and I sure hope that, um, uh, again, this is a start of a corrective measure. And, um, for the families who are in this situation or can't build homes and whatever, that we're able to make them whole. Get the infrastructure in there or at least the, uh, survey so they know and, you know, we're surveying, then they're, they won't, they won't be landlocked. Because you know, when you're surveying, hey, there's always an easement, right? You don't just say, here, oh, well, how do I, how do I get there? Well, you know, find a helicopter and then get in there. When they're done right, surveyed right, then, uh, there's always easements to get into your properties. Again, Madam Speaker, thanks for giving me the opportunity and again, I stand in full support of Bill 288-37 LS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. On the bill, Bill number 288-37 as amended. Senator Canata, you are recognized.
Situsma, situsma, Madam Speaker. Jau bai sapatiesi na proponi sa demashao makka i programan Chamorro Land Trust. Megay na salapi necesita pona mauliki Chamorro Land Trust na programa sa bulu ma tungo na necesita i infrastructure para megay na tano gi gobetno. Ma tungo na muski 11,000 acres na gaigigi gobetno na sina ma na hutzo. Lo i problema ma mas, uh, mas makka i infrastructure. Megama tungo na gwa tano niya lo tadza infrastructure pa na, na usa i tano. Tadza hanam, tadza sewer, tadza water, uh, electricity da. So then pago mas makka dangin pohn, pohn hatsegi mimi zu sa demashao, um, afzu, uh, expensive. It's very expensive to build your house these days and raise your family. So I'm really much in support of this legislation, I commend the author. And I wanna, you know, support Chamorro Land Trust, but there are a lot of issues that Chamorro Land Trust faces. That's why it's so hard because the, the times to fix it were not today, they were in the past years, in the past legislatures. But I commend the author for her steadfast commitment in this legislation. And it is my hope again with my colleagues that we rectify this situation and that the road forward, it's alanta para mona, is better. So that the next generation doesn't inherit those same challenges as they're facing today. I understand the sentiments of Senator Jesse Luhon because the same family that reached out to him is the same family that reached out to me. And it's very unfortunate. I understand the sentiments of Senator Joanne Brown as well. I, I, I'm very much an advocate for, for Chamorro Land Trust. But there are a lot of questionable operations and leases out there. So whoever these people are regardless, um, they need to pay what's due. If they sign the lease, you pay the lease. If you don't pay the lease, you should be evicted immediately. But again, it seems like certain individuals and certain groups are able to swim through this process and just keep carrying on. There's properties on the DeRido buffer strip that are not paying their lease as well to Chamorro Land Trust, but not necessarily to Chamorro Land Trust, but Gigo and DeRido communities. So, you know, I, again, I applaud the author for this legislation and again, I hope it, it really rectifies and helps, um, so, um, you know, find solutions for the community out there. Um, but I think, um, we also need to look at the development practices for Chamorro Land Trust that we need to invest in infrastructure in a specific lot so that it can be more effective. We all know about the Gigo property again, that parcel of land, uh, had, um, proposed plans. It had, um, and I, um, a huge investment in it. There was certain family members that their properties were condemned and relocated because the property was supposed to be used for that, what do you call it, dream program to push forward. Unfortunately, that plan never, um, came to fruition and it just died in its own, uh, in its own program. And it's a very unfortunate situation. Again, that could have served a hundred some families, um, with that parcel of land and also be another commercial opportunity possibly for a gas station. Because there's a lot of movement upwards in the north. So again, just wanted to support this legislation and I just wanna support Chamorro Land Trust and its growth. Um, I think the program as well, it's just, there's just so many problems that Chamorro Land Trust faces and we gotta help them figure out those problems and I look forward to hearing other solutions and I'm always open. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, um, Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Canata. On the bill, I believe everyone has spoken. On the bill, is there anyone? Speaker, you may close.
Thank you and sincerely, Dr. Luna Situsma, to my colleagues for, um, speaking on this bill and their, and their support. And I fully agree with many of them who have said that Chamorro Land Trust faces many challenges. I mean, this began years ago. Twenty years after the 1975 passage of the bill by Paul Bredalio and, and the 12th Guam Legislature, I joined Attorney Mike Phillips and Attorney Mike Bredalio and Angel Santos and then Ashon Chamorro, who were also camping out at Adalup, I joined them in court to force the governor at the time to implement this Chamorro Land Trust. That was after 20 years of it being on the books. We were successful and, um, former Judge BJ Cruz, our former colleague, really made an, uh, landmark decision in that case. I was also blessed to witness in the nineties as Legislative Council, Angel Santos as a senator, bringing the Chamorro Land Trust rules and regulations to the floor. But that was not an easy task for him back then. It was still very much controversial, who was going to be priority. And he did that, I was able to witness, with the help of hundreds of people who came down into the legislative halls and filled them in support of his version of those rules and regs. We've seen former past governors take money from this infrastructure fund despite it being supposedly in a lockbox and use it for other things in the government. We've seen, of course, these questionable commercial deals in the past. And I'm hoping we are not going to see them going forward. In 2018, the Attorney General launched an investigation of the Chamorro Land Trust, completely upheaving any work of the Chamorro Land Trust at that time as they, under the leadership of Pika Farren, the chairperson at that time, went back and and reviewed every lease in accordance with the Attorney General's mandate. We are still trying to rectify what has happened in the past and these are huge issues. In 2017, there was a lawsuit by the United States of America against the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. That lasted until 2020, only in 2020. Again, with the help of Attorney Mike Phillips, attorneys from the Attorney General's office, the leadership of Pika Farren, they were able to settle that lawsuit and we are today able to move forward again. So many, many challenges, but I am encouraged because for the most part, the employees and the board members of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, they have remained dedicated to its mission as a land restoration program meant to rectify the unjust taking of Chamorro homelands by the United States federal government between 1898 and 1968 and provide residential and agricultural land for those patrons eligible in the form of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission leases. That was reaffirmed in the lawsuit settlement. The land trust has faced revolving attorneys despite a critical need for attorneys. And it really has, I've seen this, it has caused them to change course sometimes. Revolving directors, removal of past chairs. And as one of my colleagues said, I like his words, that they truly are fixing the plane while flying it. But today we have a bill before us and with the help of my colleagues and that will expand USDA or expand the Chamorro Land Trust, uh, efforts to provide infrastructure and residential leases by partnering with the USDA. We are of course giving them the authority to go for a loan. We are hoping they might be able to convert this to a grant. USDA does have grant program, programs for areas with persistent poverty of 20% or more of the population. We are facing a 20.2% below the poverty line on Guam according to the 2020 U.S. Census. We've seen the effects of poverty on Guam, especially on those who were disenfranchised from their land. Guam ranks 44th out of 50 states or 50 states and territories ranked 44th in the median household income. That means our income is very low. The, uh, Guam, the Chamorro Land Trust Commission must partner with GWA in this effort to bring in the water and the wastewater lines. Because GWA, we recently authorized them to apply for USDA funding as well. So we must work together. We must, we've asked GWA for years to incorporate the Chamorro Land Trust Commission properties, especially those tracts, those priority tracts, at least three which I've made them provide at oversight hearings, three priority tracts that we can divide into subdivisions so that we can push GWA to make that part of their master plan to bring the sewer into those areas and the water into those areas. That's critical. And we must work together on the USDA funding so that we complement GWA's applications as well. But even with the USDA authority, they will need funding to reimburse the loan. They will need to show that upfront that they have a repayment source. And as we talked about, we've got some current leases. They're not enough. We've got the submerged cable leases that we are hoping are going to be bringing in some income, but not yet. We have some bills pending that would give some of the excess funds that we have right now to Chamorro Land Trust so that they can apply right now for this USDA program. I've requested for an expedited hearing on that bill. But I want to thank those who testified on this bill for their consistent efforts in this regard. This includes the chairperson of the Board of Commissioners of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, Arlene Bredalio. Commissioner David Herrera. The, um, he's a coordinator for, but he pretty much acts like he's the acting director today, Joey Cruz from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission. Christopher Bedasi and Miguel Bredalio from GWA, Edith Pangolin and President Guam Housing Corporation, Patricia Keir, Special Assistant for Planning and Development of the Guam Housing Corporation. Mr. Jose Manglotnia Mesa, Benny Menjola Amandres, Carlos Camacho and Ronald Leguatia for their testimony. I want to thank my colleagues again and the people of Guam for their continued support for the Chamorro Land Trust Commission and urging of us to act with urgent haste in this regard. I'd like to thank, of course, my co-sponsor, Senator Sabina Perez, standing consistently for ensuring that infrastructure is going to be provided throughout Guam. I'd also like to, uh, add to the bill co-sponsors, Senator Tai Te Gui and Senator Brown, and thank them for attending the hearing. And Senator Barnett, Senator San Augustine, Senator, uh, Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Frank Bloss, Senator Chris Duennius, Senator Roy Canata, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Luhon and Senator Siniklas, please. Uh, that's a motion to add them as co-sponsors.
On the motion to add co-sponsors, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Situsma, again, Madam Speaker and colleagues, and I'd like to move Bill number 288-37 COR as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture and further amended on the floor to the third reading.
On the motion to place the bill in the third reading voting file, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We are now on Bill 246-37 COR introduced by Speaker Therese M. Turlohi. Speaker Turlohi, you are recognized.
Situsma, and, um, I'd like to move Bill number 246-37 COR as introduced by Therese M. Turlohi. It is an act to amend section 6A117 of chapter 6A title 18 Guam administrative rules and regulations relative to the lease award of the Chamorro Land Trust leases. I'd like to move that to the third reading and I'd like to discuss that motion.
You may proceed.
Situsma, so this bill, uh, it's quite simple compared to the last one, USDA financing and all, but this bill would, uh, have a very significant impact on the Chamorro Land Trust as well. have a very significant impact on the Chamorro Land Trust as well. According to the Commission, because of the investigation in 2018, being cited by the Attorney General for giving leases to people who were not in the order of application, they've been abiding by, we must go in the order of application. In an abundance of caution, they stop themselves if they are not able to process that applicant in the order of application and they make all kinds of efforts to try to process that applicant. This bill would amend the current rule and it would authorize the Chamorro Land Trust Commission to move forward to process the next applicant for a lease award if the applicant is unable to provide proof as required under the current rule of certain things. In other words, so in the 1995 rules and regulations that were passed, they adopted a rule that you must prove before we give you a lease that you are able to approve, you have approved loan or financing for construction of a residence, you have a contract for construction, you have the equivalent evidence of intent or ability to construct a residential dwelling or evidence of the applicant's intent and ability to fulfill pre-existing requirements entered into between other parties with respect to the residential dwelling the applicant wishes to occupy. So when they reach an, when they're ready to award a lease and the person is not able to show evidence in this regard, we don't want the Chamorro Land Trust to stop. That person will still be, they will retain their place. They are still eligible, they are processed, and we, the Chamorro Land Trust will still wait for this evidence and then proceed with the lease. But in the interim, we want them to be able to move forward with the rest of those waiting for leases. So I'm adding the words to this, to the current law that will say, "In the event that the applicant is unable to provide sufficient proof, as stated in 6A 117B, the Commission may proceed to process the next applicant for a lease award that is able to provide the sufficient proof needed." And this is again at the request of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission so that they will be able, and with the help of Guam Housing, they are going to be able to review these applicants almost batches at a time now, hopefully, and be able to move many of them along. And that's the goal. And so this will help get them there. So I thank my colleagues and I ask them for their support of this bill as well. Situus Massey.
On the bill, Bill Number 246-37. Minority Leader Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One of the author can use the question. Just listening to the presentation and to the introduction of the bill, question comes to mind is, while we give the Commission the opportunity to move on to the next individual, we talk about a timeframe. Is there in statute or will it be spelled out to, how much time is going to be given for Applicant A to be able to fill those requirements before we move on to Applicant B?
Speaker Terlaki, do you yield to the question?
It's a good question. I don't know the answer right now. I know that they have, you know, kind of like internal rules that they follow. So, but I, to ensure that they have tried all efforts, but I don't know the timeframe on that right now.
Okay, and I think that's where the little hiccup may be here. And I just, you know, if there is language that can be able to provide so that, you know, time is relative and it could be subjective. That could be objective. And we just don't want to get caught up in, well, you know what? You didn't give me enough time. And the other space, we gave you too much time. But it's that definition of what that time is. Because I see the value in this and being able to, we don't have to hold on to this or, you know, to make a decision one way or the other. It's just that I think we have an obligation. There should be that obligation of being able to set a timeframe, a time limit on this. So, Madam Chair, can I ask for just for one minute recess to speak to the author?
We'll take a minute recess. We're back from recess. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that opportunity and speaking to the author of the bill. I think that if it's consensus, what we do is we'll go ahead and move along with the bill and, you know, allow the Commission to be able to promulgate in the, in its rules and regulations, the timeframes and those, and that language necessary so that we can identify, it's very clear to Applicant A how much time they have and very Applicant B, how much time they have to wait before they move on. So that's something that is not necessarily needed in this, in this piece of legislation, but obviously something that the Land Trust Commission has got to be able to address and will give them that opportunity. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Minority Leader. On the bill, Senator Tai Te Gui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I stand in full support of this legislation. I think the board really wants to clean up as much as they can and ensure that, you know, whatever shenanigans were happening back in the past does not happen again. This bill is a long time coming. But it also gives the opportunity for the board to come up with rules and regulations. And as I was speaking with the author of the legislation as well, that, and of course, the prior speaker, that this is an opportunity for us to assist them in any way we can. And that is to, if we have to move these rules and regs on the floor right away instead of going through the whole process because of the timeline. You know, I think people are just sick and tired of hearing all these things about somebody getting ahead of them and they've had their names there for, you know, a decade. And just we so. We've, we've seen some issues that have happened at Chamorro Land Trust. I'm really glad that in this term, that these things are being addressed. These concerns are being addressed, not in just this bill, but other legislation that has been put forward. And I humbly ask that the author of this legislation, include me as a co-sponsor to this bill. And I hope that I can insist in any way I can with Chamorro Land Trust and this hard-working board who's so anxious, you know, to get these rules in place and move forward for the betterment of our people and for what is correct and just. The whole intention of the Chamorro Land Trust that was envisioned years ago. Finally, we'll put these, these rules and regs in place, bring comfort to our community or those who are on that list. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity and I stand in full support of this measure.
You're very welcome, Senator Tello. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Chris Barnett, I will acknowledge you at this time. Please proceed.
Situus Massey. Madam, I don't know if I should just keep standing because I want to rise in support of all these Chamorro Land Trust bills and again commend the committee chair and the author for proffering it. I attended this hearing. Of course, I support the bill and I was, I testified, spoken in this hearing about that day way back in 1995 when we opened up the Chamorro Land Trust program. I remember I was working at Leo Palace on the golf course. I was 21 years old. And a whole bunch of my coworkers ended up taking the day off so they could go wait in line to get, write an application for this property. And I remember that at the time, I was really scraping by. I was again 21 years old, just living on my own. And I kind of did the math in my head and figured, man, if I was short on my paycheck one day at pay, that, you know, some, some bills might not get paid. So never really went. And I remember being a young, young boy, riding around with my grandfather, the late Jose Santos Tenorio, who was a driver for Governor Manuel Guerrero, a warden at the Department of Corrections, a former Guam Police Department officer. And whenever we would drive by Baragota Heights and Radio Baragota, they would always say, it was either him or my grandma. They'd say, "Look over there at Radio Baragota. Yeah, that was your family's land." And it hit hard because we grew up poor, you know? We didn't have property. We don't have property. We didn't have land to pass on. I never got land. Like many of our people, just displaced from all the possibilities that so many on our island who are very blessed and fortunate, I hope they don't take it for granted. But every time we drove by there, and I remember being old enough to finally ask, "Well, what happened?" And what I was told, and they had some dusty documents that, you know, they basically sold this land to the federal government for as little as, what I was told, a few cents an acre. And so I've always been a very ardent supporter of the Chamorro Land Trust program, even in all its imperfections. You know, this bruise, this batter, this troubled thing, this is justice, you know? I commend the body's hard work to make this justice, you know, look as good and be able to be implemented much quicker than it has been. You know, it's ironic because although I didn't take the day off to go wait in line on that day back in 1995, most of my coworkers who did still haven't gotten their Chamorro Land Trust land. And so the gist of the testimony in this, for this bill in this public hearing, it was very supportive. And I'm just going to go ahead and read the words of, you know, men much wiser than me, people who have, who have had their hands on this process. And I'll start with the chairman, who was actually one of the individuals with Nashon who protested for the implementation of the Chamorro Land Trust program. He said, "This bill will give the Chamorro Land Trust Commission the authority to proceed with processing the next applicant for the lease award. And then the Commission may consider other applicants who are able to provide the necessary proof of compliance with the lease. This new provision in the bill allows the Commission to move forward with the lease award process if an applicant fails to provide sufficient proof of their qualification. It ensures that the process continues smoothly by considering other applicants who can meet the necessary requirements." Chairman Herrera goes on. "We understand that we have about 8,000 applicants in the books and that we are basically stagnant on applicant number six. So because of this problem, this bill is one of the remedies to resolve this issue. And that applicant applied way back in 1995. So basically, it's been almost 30 years that we have stagnated and stopped the process in the Commission." Yeah, so despite what you read about in the papers, it's not like signed leases are flying out of the Chamorro Land Trust Commission, but it's my hope that they will if we pass this bill. Commissioner Earl J. Garrido also testified. "These bills, and there were several that the speaker heard on this day, and they are companion measures and support all of them wholeheartedly. These bills would set up evolving guidelines to effectively implement the mandates of the Chamorro Land Trust. Although the Land Trust has existed since the mid-'90s, it was plagued with constraints that led to ineffective financing, leadership and management. More time and focus should have been afforded to comprehensive planning toward its mandates." Commissioner Garrido goes on in his testimony. "Without these bills amending our mandates, there is a possibility of a few hundred lessees and their families that could be displaced and become homeless. It's important to recognize the need for continuous improvement and adaptation," which is exactly what we're doing here, colleagues, "to current challenges in order to ensure the success of an organization like the Chamorro Land Trust. By providing more autonomy and support to the Land Trust, it can better fulfill its mission and serve its stakeholders. The authorizing mandates for the CLTC must evolve to meet the present-day tribulations. The bill aims to address historical constraints that have hindered the effectiveness of the Land Trust, including, again, financial issues, leadership and management challenges, and the lack of comprehensive planning." Commissioner Garrido says he greatly urges this 37th Guam Legislature to vote in solidarity with the passing of these bills. And then my favorite whistleblower, land agent from the Chamorro Land Trust, Ms. Lydia Tolu, also testified in support of this bill. She testified, "I'm in full support of Bill 246 regarding processing applicants for lease awards. This is help, just to help with the processing of applicants waiting for a lease award. This bill will allow the applicants to keep their place in line for lease award and the applicants who are ready to move forward in the lease award can proceed. It's simple. While today you are not ready to be awarded a lease, you will still have your place in line. No one is removed, just waiting until they're ready." So like the previous bill, my remarks are very similar. This one checks all the boxes, all the right people are supporting it. And I hope that this measure passes, hopefully unanimously, with the support of my great colleagues. Situus Massey.
Buen pavez, Senator Barnett. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Brown, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill. And I think it's fortunate, this particular session that we're dealing with more than one bill related to seeing how we can improve the actual implementation and operations of the Chamorro Land Trust. I'm not going to reiterate the comments I made earlier again. I think that's, you know, the unfortunate history and the reality of Chamorro Land Trust. But moving forward, we certainly want to see that there's a clear process so everyone knows what it is. I mean, even when there are rules and regulations and procedures, we've seen how those things have been ignored in the past, how the Land Trust and the resources of the Land Trust have been misused. But hopefully, this will allow mutual responsibility. The Land Trust being responsible for how it operates and manages the resources of the Land Trust and the property itself, and also the applicants. Because, you know, sometimes it takes more than one side to do the wrong thing. There's also been many of our, you know, unfortunately, some of our own people that have stood up to misuse the Land Trust and jump in line and use political connections and favors to make sure that they're accommodated. Like I said, I mean, I even know of a family that has Land Trust property adjacent to their existing family property and not just one, two, three, four siblings. How does that happen? You got to ask yourself. I think the more life that's placed on the operations of the Land Trust, it makes it a little difficult, you know, for all those fingers and hands that want to do things in the wrong way to do what they do. If there's more awareness and there's more attention placed on the Land Trust so that they do what they're supposed to do and they're supposed to do the right thing in properly implementing these leases. And at the same time, applicants also have their responsibility for what they need to bring to the table. And at the same time, applicants also have their responsibility of what they need to bring to the table. And if they're not intending to use the property, not prepared to use the property, or not using it in the way that they're required to do so, then by all means, that property should go next in line to the next applicant. There is so much misuse of land trust land. And I've been out there. I've seen these properties. And it's been a long time, it's been almost 15 years probably, since the land trust has even done a collective assessment of these lots that have been handed out. Some of these lots have been subleased. Some of them are being rented out for income when that was not the intended purpose. The intended purpose was to build a residential home for that family. And of course, we see where the junk cars and all the other things and the other misuse of the land has come up because the land trust itself has not properly regulated the use of either agricultural lots, residential lots, or commercial lots. And then on top of that, when you don't have the proper use of the property, you don't have the proper regulations in place, the land is just left there with all these issues compounding and piling up on top of it. And as I mentioned time and time again on this floor, there are many qualified, those of us that are from Tremor descent, whatever your mixture may be, I've got half of it, that will never have the opportunity to have a land trust lot. Even if we just stopped at our generation. We're not talking about the children, the grandchildren, the great-grandchildren who will never have the opportunity to have a Tremor Land Trust lot because there will never be enough land to go around. So, for those that are privileged and fortunate enough to finally, hopefully, if they've got their property now or will get it in the future, I'm very hopeful that they're going to meet what the requirements are, what they also need to live up in terms of their responsibilities for this property because land's expensive. Even those of us that have family land that we will inherit. I mean, I went and bought my lot, as you know, Madam Speaker, because it was in the right place for my family. But, you know, I'm also, will be the recipient of family land. But even that's a complication for many Tremor families in resolving inherited land as well. So, for those that are fortunate to receive these land trust properties, I hope that they use it the right way, the proper way, and the way that's intended. If you have an agriculture lot, then by all means, be out there planting. You're not even required to do a commercial type of agriculture. Simply if you're doing it for the subsistence of your family, to meet your family needs. You can do that. You can go out and plant coconut trees. You can go out and plant avocado trees. You can go out and plant manzanita trees, whatever it is. You can show that you're demonstrating, you're planting for the needs of your family so that that land is properly used. And if you have it for residential, then by all means, use it for that. Don't be subleasing it or renting it out or using something else that the land wasn't intended to because you're abusing it. You know, we have a tendency to take for granted what we have. It's very easy to do that because there it is. We don't care about it. But for those that don't have, for those that wish, that sacrifice, that work very hard, sometimes they're, wow, no matter how hard they work, they're left at the end of the line. And then there are others that have so much given to them and they just abuse it because they have it. They don't care about it. So, I think we have an expectation that the land trust who's failed, and again, that's the challenge I have because at one end, I understand the concept, the idea, the agenda of why the land trust was put in place. And yet, when I see the continued abuse of the resource, I still, to this day, "Commercial leases? Oh, can we just offset our payments until we actually build our project?" I have to go, you know, my mind, I go, "What the heck is that? Can I just get around to paying rent when we build something? And we've held on to the land for years?" And I'll tell you, big money, big players. Let's look at the names of who are the applicants on that lease agreement. But the land trust, oh, okay. And then at the other end, we're complaining, "Oh, we don't have money for infrastructure. We can't clear the road. We can't do this." We don't, you know, the list goes on. So, certainly, anything we can do, and we can't, you know, manage the land trust from the legislature. We can pass policy, but we can't implement the policy. We can't even make sure the policy is executed short of regular oversights, which we probably have to do every day of the week because of how messed up the history of the land trust is with regards to these lease agreements. So, I certainly support this. I think every effort we can to ensure that policies are put in place. It's very clear, the procedures and the expectation that we need to meet if we're applying or have this property handed to us, that we should ensure we also, as applicants, comply with the requirements. Because like I said, the most bothersome thing is that there are young people right now that are eligible for this land that will never, ever, ever have an opportunity to have these lots. More of the reason we have to ensure that those that do comply with what those requirements are. And more importantly, the land trust that has the authority actually ensures that these requirements are being met. So, I certainly rise in support, Madam Speaker, of this legislation. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
You're very welcome, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Sinagastin on the main motion?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I rise in support of this bill, but I've got some reservation about it because exactly what my past colleague from Pago Bay mentioned. We want to talk about people that got leased. Over 30 years ago, I was given a letter to go and survey a property to find out up to today that track still hasn't been registered, even after I paid for surveying. Over 30 years. So, we want to talk about people that are, because this bill talks about the need to make sure they qualify. Make sure they're going to do what they intend to do. When they filled in the application and they're called in to be interviewed, that's when it should be determined. Not when they go to inspect. When they go to inspect, it's about compliance. It's not about no more determining if you're qualified or you meet the requirements. But a lot of things will be all factored to the infrastructure and all that other stuff that we need to take care of. But I agree. Policies, we can pass. The agency, the commission, needs to just square it away. And with that, I stand in support of the bill. Just fair warning to Tremor Land Trust. Por favor, so que se te sumo, basta más justa la hammy, guys. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinagastin. Anyone else on the main motion? If not, Speaker Therese, you may close.
Si, dos, mase. And again, thank you to my colleagues for their debate on this bill. And to those who testified on this bill, we actually had an attendance that are hearing many of the Tremor Land Trust Commission employees because they are the ones who are dealing with these applicants and those leases and hearing from them on a very regular basis and looking for a way to settle these issues. We also heard that day from the commissioners, the acting chair at the time, David Herrera, and Commissioner Earl Garrido. And we heard from Angela Santos, sister of the late Angel Santos, from Carlos Leguany and Ronald Leguany, who is a member of the Guam Incestral Lands Commission, and from attorney Mike Phillips. So, thank you to them who testified. And to my colleagues, of course, Chris Barnett and Senator Roy Canata, who attended the hearing. There were several bills that day, so this was quite a long hearing. And I'd like to make a motion to add cosponsors to the bill, if I might, to include Senator Barnett, Senator Canata, Senator Titigui, Senator Blas, Senator Brown, Senator Sinagastin.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you. Yes, and I'd like to assure my colleagues. The commissioners that we are looking at today and the employees at the Tremor Land Trust, they're spending four hours in their regular meetings. And they are meeting, I think, more than they are mandated to meet to try to resolve so many hundreds, actually in the thousands, of issues that are brought to their attention and that have incurred because of past actions by previous boards and previous directors. So, what, you know, I too am concerned. I do not want to create a way to make anything more unfair than the unfairness that has occurred. I admit, and I see it, and I think these commissioners see it, that some people were processed ahead of others, and it looks very unfair. So, that is such a huge problem. It's not addressed in this bill. However, this bill makes it very clear how they're going to move forward. Moving forward, this is how they're going to process the applications. They are still going to prove that they are eligible. And I believe there are enough safeguards in place that they cannot act unfairly. These people have been on the list since 1995. They are aware that they are on this list. They know where they are on the list, or they are able to know. If they don't right now, because Tremor Land Trust can make that available to them. They know, according to the rules that have been in place since 1995, what they need to provide, what they need to show to be priority. And if they are unable to show that at this time, they will not lose their place. They are going to stay right in that place. But we will be able to process the next in line until they are ready. Reports are given by the staff to the board on all of those applicants that they have to review. And if they come up with any issues such as this one is not able to prove these things right now, that will be brought to the attention of the board. So, I believe this will be safe in its implementation. It will be fair in its implementation. But more importantly, it will allow them to move forward with these applicants from the 1995 list. So, again, I thank my colleagues for their support. And I thank, I ask them for their continued support in getting the bill to the governor's office. Si, dos, mase.
On the motion, Madam Speaker.
I move the place Bill Number 246-37COR as amended on the floor to the third reading.
On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Senator Therese on Bill 249-37COR as the second cosponsor. Would you like to?
Yes, I'd move to set this aside to the bottom of the agenda right before the committee of the whole bill, if we could.
Thank you. On that motion, are there any objections? Hearing or hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you, Speaker Terlahe. Senator Will Parkinson on Bill Number 14-37COR. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to add Bill Number 14-37COR as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations and Appropriation, introduced by myself, William A. Parkinson, Roy A. B. Canata, Dwayne T. D. Siniklis, and Jesse A. Luhon. An act to add a new Chapter 11 of Title V Guam Code annotated relative to codifying a procedure for public meetings during a public emergency and ensuring the right of the public to attend public meetings during public emergencies and to cite this act as the Public Meetings During Emergencies Act that I would like to discuss. I would like to move it to the third reading and discuss.
You may proceed, Senator Parkinson.
The Model of Public Meetings During Emergencies Act was promulgated by the Uniform Law Commission in 2022. The COVID-19 pandemic highlighted the need for public bodies to meet remotely when emergencies make in-person meetings impossible or inadvisable, as well as the need for rules to assure that virtual meetings of public bodies comply with any applicable laws that provide for public observation and participation. The Public Meetings During Emergencies Act is intended to provide a statutory framework that will enable public bodies to meet when such emergencies occur. The act builds on existing state laws authorizing the declaration of emergencies and subjecting public meetings to procedural and public access requirements during an emergency declaration. It is intended to work in harmony with those laws, particularly open meetings and other laws providing for public comment on or participation in the deliberation of public bodies. During the COVID-19 pandemic, many governors suspended laws concerning the meetings of public bodies, such as those governing the location of meetings and public access and participation, and authorized virtual meetings. Some executive orders included provisions intended to create public access and participation rights in virtual meetings comparable to those applicable to traditional in-person meetings. Several states also enacted temporary legislative authorizations for virtual meetings. The result has been a patchwork of varying rules concerning the procedure for such meetings and uneven protection of public access and participation. The overarching purpose of this act are, one, to provide the states with a uniform approach consistent with each state's needs and practices, which will enable public bodies to continue to function during emergencies that prevent in-person meetings. And, two, to protect the interests of the public in observing or participating in those meetings to the maximum extent possible. Drawing in part from executive orders and legislative legislation adopted in response to the pandemic, this act provides a statutory basis for virtual meetings during an emergency conditioned on compliance with requirements intended to ensure the effective functioning of the meetings and the public access and participation comparable to that required for in-person meetings. I humbly ask for my colleagues' support in this measure. And let's have this framework for public emergencies before we have the emergency in place so that we are better prepared to handle the challenges of that time. With that, Madam Vice Speaker, I yield the rest of my time, and I look forward to the discussion. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator Parkinson. On the main motion, anyone wishing to speak? Senator Fisher and then Senator Brown. Senator Fisher, you may proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. I actually rise to ask my friend, Senator Parkinson, a question.
Please proceed.
It's more along the lines of an invitation to discuss New 11101 Definitional Section 12, Public Emergency. The Organic Act describes instances in which the governor may act, such as invasion, insurrection, riots, et cetera, and so forth. And my question to my friend is, is it wise to limit the definition of public emergency in this section to only a subset of events? For example, you know, the obvious one. Would this act not be appropriate also where there was an insurrection and the governor declared a public emergency?
Senator Parkinson, would you yield?
Well, I figure if we're in an insurrection situation, we might have greater problems than noticing of public hearings. So, to that extent, maybe there is a little bit of a not inclusion of everything. But this has been based on model legislation. And so, it's really kind of a base for us to work at. So, for any of my colleagues here, if you have any amendments to strengthen or enhance or further tailor this bill to be more like what would be needed for Guam, I am open to any and all suggestions to make this fit as best as possible for the island.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much for that answer. I guess a bit of a follow-up. We have a universe of possible emergency situations. We can't even imagine what the emergency might be. Yet, the law reduces the universe below, I think, what is provided for in the Organic Act. And I'm wondering if the gentleman would think that it might be a useful suggestion? might be a useful suggestion to strike everything, all the limitations on what is an emergency. We just leave 12 as a public emergency. Public emergency is an emergency as declared by the governor, and that's it. I would just invite him to consider that, ma'am.
I'm going to do it as in an inquiry form. Senator Will, would you like to respond to that?
Yes, I would like to respond to that. I tend to agree with my friend that maybe it would not behoove us to limit the scope of what a public emergency is, because he's right, you know? The world has a way of throwing curveballs at us that we've never expected before. And who knows what emergencies may befall us in the future? That's why they're emergencies, right? They come up out of nowhere, and they're kind of unexpected. And so I would support language, I would support an amendment to strike that section out if you would make that amendment, sir.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Fisher, does that suffice?
Yes, it does, ma'am. And I would like to thank the gentleman for the consideration of the suggestion. I would like to, I guess I'll approach their clerk for the purpose of drafting an amendment.
You can move to strike.
Yeah, it's a motion to, I guess it would be, well, actually, inclusion as well. A public emergency, a public emergency means an emergency as declared by the governor, and then strike the rest of it.
Do my colleagues understand? Can you just say, state it one more time for the record, Senator Fisher?
Yes, ma'am. I would invite the body to refer to Page 2 of the gentleman's bill, beginning at line 25, which reads, Sub 12, Public Emergency. I would include in the language, I propose including in the bill, "A public emergency is an emergency as declared by the governor." Full stop. All language after that phrase to Page 3, Line 14 would be struck.
On that motion, does anyone wish to speak? If not, is there any objection? Speaker Therese, you are recognized on the amendment. Is after the word "governor," strike out everything after that on that, on that section. You have the floor.
Yes, Situs Massey. I'm trying to find, I thought I saw somewhere else in the bill that more qualification on when this really applies. So the scope of the bill said it applies to conduct of a virtual meeting only while an emergency declaration is in effect. So this definition, then, will be controlling. But I guess for me, I prefer the bill in its original, it's in this form, where it's saying it's a public emergency where there's imminent threat of illness or health condition. Because we have other public emergencies and, but I still think that in-person meetings are preferable, particularly when we are in, like, typhoon emergencies. I've seen those meetings that they call for everybody to come down and make sure that we're all on the same page. And we see eye to eye, literally and figuratively. And I continue to see benefit in that. And when we were under that public health emergency and prohibited from these meetings, they're helpful and they're useful in those situations. But if not absolutely necessary under that situation, I would prefer that, especially in emergencies, they are meeting face to face so that they can see each other and make sure we have a full understanding of what's going on. I thought I saw it somewhere else. Just can't find it. But otherwise, so that's my only reason to object to the amendment. But I understand the intent. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Anyone else wishing to speak on the amendment?
Point of information.
I will go ahead and acknowledge your point of information, then work with Senator Parkinson.
I was just going to invite the Speaker Terlaihi. She may be looking for Page 3, Line 15 through Line 21. That might, that might be the definition she was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. I will go ahead and yield to Speaker Terlaihi, based on the point of information. Speaker, I will allow you to speak.
Situs Massey. I read, okay, I'm seeing it now. It's on Page 4, where it outlines when you can conduct a virtual meeting. And it's, it is also where he pointed out in, on Page 3 and Page 4. And it's only allowed to do virtual meeting when the emergency declaration prohibits, limits, or has the effect of prohibiting or limiting an in-person meeting of the public body. Then I would have no objection to this amendment.
I'm sorry, Speaker, was that no objection or an objection?
Yes, no objection.
No objection. Okay. Anyone else on the amendment? If not, are there, and Senator Fisher, would you like to close? If you wave, are there any objections to this amendment? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? Senator Brown, I recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Have you known, for quite a number of years, I've been an advocate for the open government law. I'm just grabbing the bill here. One of the concerns that I raised at the public hearing, which I don't see was addressed by the committee in reviewing this particular bill, has to deal with the, how these different government entities are going to inform members of the public. And it says here on Page 8, Section of 11108, Number 1, "The means by which the public body will inform members of the public that a virtual meeting will be held." And this is going to go through the AAA process. I have a concern with this. I raised it during the public hearing, because, I mean, if we're going to have all these different government agencies determining how they're going to inform the public, I think that puts the public at a tremendous disadvantage. I mean, we understand emergencies. I've had to run operations under emergencies in this government. But I don't think that's something that every entity gets to decide differently how they're going to inform the public. What do you do if the power is out? We've been through that. What do you do if communications are down? We've experienced that. I mean, we had a whole situation of, even cell phones, our cell phones that we spend so much time of the day with that were not operating. We didn't have signals to operate. So I wanted to ask the author of this particular bill, how do you address that? Because I brought that up. I want to ensure consistency. And while I hear a lot of complaints about how it costs money, and on and on we go, when we're spending public money, I think by all means, the public has a right to know where to go. They shouldn't be running around looking here, there, and everywhere on getting notice, especially if a meeting is of tremendous significance that involves authorizing the expenditure of money, for whatever reason, to respond to that emergency. The public should have a consistent way of getting the message and knowing what to anticipate after a natural disaster or a man-made disaster, whatever happens, where they can go. But if we leave that up to every government agency, oh, my goodness, I don't know where and how we're going to find that out. So if I can ask the author of the bill if he'd yield to that question, because that line I'm not comfortable with at all.
Senator Parkinson, would you like to yield?
Could you please tell me again which line you're having the problems with?
We're looking at the last page. I brought this up during the public hearing with regards to the, the last section, 11108, Number 1. "The means by which the public will be, will inform members of the public that a virtual meeting will be held." I interpret that as each entity can decide how they're going to go about informing the public of how the meeting and where the meeting's being held. That's my interpretation of the Fino English here.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, I will yield to that question. The way I interpret this Line 1 is not that this is a shall determine how it's done, it's a may determine how it's done. And that's something that could come up in their working group discussions as they craft those rules and regs. But ultimately, I would actually defer to just existing laws as a guideline for these agencies on how to proceed. And then, if the existing law is deficient in providing a satisfactory answer on how to proceed, then they go to the may part of this, where they may include the means by which the public bodies will inform members of the public that a virtual meeting will be held. I think that's just an extra layer of flexibility. If the law currently, as it stands, is deficient on how these agencies should move, it gives them a mechanism to rectify that in the AAA process.
Senator Brown, does that help? I appreciate the response of the sponsor of this bill, Madam Speaker, but it still doesn't answer my question. I think giving them the latitude that they may do it and then therefore execute it, to me, is still bothersome. It still does not address the means under which the public is going to be informed with some consistency. I don't want to see different government agencies having a different means of doing that, that the public does not anticipate or expect to be notified, because we don't know who or where or what is doing what. We do know that under emergencies, and maybe my good friend and my senator from Baragada might be able to elaborate, having responded at his end with regards to emergencies. But there is a means normally the government has to channel out that information to the general public in the event our standard means of communications go down so that the public can be notified. Before, back in the day, we always knew we could turn on our radio, and we had reliable announcers keeping us up to speed and informed on what was going on during that time. But we don't have that level of consistency anymore. So again, this particular provision bothers me. If it stays in the bill, then I have a problem voting for it. Because I'll have to tell you, if I have an emergency to respond to, I'm going to have all day to have to read all these requirements to know what to do. So I just have reservation about including it. I'd like to make a motion to delete it. I don't think that latitude should be given to these government agencies on how or what. There are procedures set up with regards to emergency response and what steps need to be taken, including communication steps. They weren't as effective during the last typhoon, however, that we had last year. But those guidelines are there, and I think that needs to be looked at instead of leaving latitude up to the agencies to decide, or may, that they may be able to decide how they're going to notify the public of these official meetings occurring as a result of an emergency. So that's my proposed amendment. I certainly could put it writing to delete it. But I certainly hope that maybe my good colleague from Baragada can elaborate on emergency response.
So the motion to delete Senator from Pago Bay is on Page 8, starting from 9/11 to Line 22?
Yes, that section, yes, Number 1. I don't, I don't like opening the door with regards to that. I think we should have a very clear means of communicating with the public. If we're not able to do it through the normal channels that are set for currently in the open government law, then there are procedures put in place for communications with the public during an emergency that the government has a channel to access to communicate with the public.
Thank you. So there is a motion to delete Section 1108. Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? Senator Parkinson, I will recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I have approached this bill in the spirit of open collaboration to make this bill as good as possible. And so I would be willing to support my good friend's amendment, because while I understand the reasons we put it in to give latitude there, because frankly, we cannot contemplate every possible scenario of a public emergency. It's just an impossibility. And if we tried, this bill would go infinite absurdium. And so I support this bill, I support this amendment to err on the side of less latitude and codifying it in a much more concrete way. I do believe that the law itself is very clear on what the requirements are. But, you know, we can't plan for every scenario. We, that's, that's what makes them emergencies, right? And in that spirit, I support this amendment, and I thank the good senator for her suggestion. And with that, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Anyone else on the amendment? Senator Blas, I will recognize you. Minority Leader, you may speak.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. I stand in support of the amendment as well. And I assure the author of the legislation that the deletion of this, this is actually already covered. There is, in the state of an emergency and the declaration of an emergency, the proper process is that there are also the activation of what is called the Joint Information Center. And all the information that is, that affects the government, whether it be meetings, whether it be actions and whatnot, all that information is taken to this JIC, to the Joint Information Center for widespread dissemination that is uniform, that is, that everybody basically would understand. So to give the assurance of the author, and to give the assurance to the body, the deletion of this, of that particular section does not take away, does not dilute the purpose of this thing. It just makes sure that we stay in the uniform of a process that already exists. Granted, that, you know, the Joint Information Center, because emergencies are dynamic, not, there is no one true fit process to be able to disseminate information based on emergency. It is the JIC's role to be able to go through that minutia based on the type of emergency that exists, and then how to keep the public not just safe, well-informed, but also safe. So I stand in support of the amendment. I want to assure the author that the deletion of this section does not dilute this. It just makes sure that everything is in sync. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Minority Leader, anyone else on the amendment? If not, Senator Joanne, would you like to close? On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. On the main motion, anyone else wishing to speak? If not, Speaker, do you have a point of information?
No, I'd like to speak on the main motion.
On the main motion, I apologize.
However, I'd like to make a motion to recess until 2:00 p.m.
On the motion to recess to 2:00 p.m., is there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Thank you, Speaker.